No, I'm not. I'm not an intruder.
Yeah. We ran over. We ran over.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'll text you.
Yeah.
I'll text you.
You're here?
Email, yeah.
Yeah. That's good. Hello. Yeah. Yeah.
I love when we have like graduations and stuff like this. It's cool.
Yeah. We just did it on board.
All right, everyone. It is now 6:30. Let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to first say my heart is full with seeing so many amazing individuals sitting in the room in front of us, and thanks for those that are tuning in online via Facebook. With this, I'd like to have Katie please call roll.
Schumate.
Here.
Cox.
Here.
Cosmore.
Here.
McNabb.
Here.
Molnar.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
Thank you. You'll notice that we don't have any absent council members or voting members. We do have an absent city attorney, as well as our finance director will address the city attorney later in tonight's agenda. With that being said, I'd like to call out the agenda sitting in front of you for both the public and council. You'll see the agenda in your packet, and we'd be looking for a motion for approval of this evening's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Molnar, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? Katie, please call roll.
Cox.
Yes.
Hasmore.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Molnar.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Great. Motion carried. I am really excited to turn over to the next topic. You'll see in your packet, just significant thanks and gratitude to all that serve our community in such an incredible way, and Chief Kane for your leadership over our fire department, and love to turn over the floor to you for this special moment this evening. Please make sure that light is green for me.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Today, we're recognizing an incredible milestone in the lives of 10 individuals. We have eight here, correct?
Seven.
They have not only completed the journey through the school, our firefighter academy, but they have also emerged as a full-fledged firefighters, ready to serve and protect the community. It's no small feat to become a firefighter. It takes courage, dedication, and a willingness to put oneself in harm's way for the safety and well-being of others. These graduates have demonstrated these qualities in abundance throughout their 300 hours of rigorous training. During the time in fire school, they've learned the ins and outs of firefighting techniques, the importance of teamwork, and the official skill and a critical skills needed to respond swiftly and efficiently in emergency situations. They have endured grueling physical challenges, honed their mental resistance, and embraced the values of service and sacrifice that define the firefighting profession. But their journey doesn't stop here. In fact, it only begins here. As they step to their roles as firefighters, they will face new challenges and responsibilities. They'll encounter moments of fear, uncertainty, but they will also experience moments of triumph and heroism. They will forge lifelong bonds with their fellow firefighters, and they will become beacons of hope and reassurance in times of crisis. As we congratulate these graduates today, let us also extend our gratitude to their families and loved ones who have supported them every step of the way. Beyond every firefighter in a network of unwavering support, and we thank each and every one of you for sharing and by these graduates as they pursue their dreams. To the graduates, I say this: You are now part of a proud and noble tradition. You are the embodiment of bravery, selfishness, and service. As you embark on the next chapter of your journey, know that you carry with you the hopes and prayers of entire community. Your dedication and commitment inspired us all, and we are honored to call you firefighters. Additionally, it's important to take a moment to recognize the individual support, sorry, invaluable support and sacrifice of their families. Beyond firefighters stands a network of loved ones who provide unwavering encouragement, understanding, and strength. Throughout the grueling hours of training, the late-night study sessions, the physical and mental challenges of the school, it's the families who have been there every step of the way. They offered a shoulder to lean on, a listening ear, and a constant source of motivation. They've celebrated the success and provided comfort during the setbacks. An unwavering support has been the foundation upon which these graduates have built their But their journey doesn't end with graduation. As these graduates embark on careers in the fire service, their families will continue to play a crucial role. The awful words of encouragement before each shift wait anxiously for the safe return and provide a sense of normalcy and love in the midst of chaos. They'll understand the unique challenges and demands of the firefighting profession, and they'll stand by their loved ones with unwavering support and pride. To the families of these graduates, I exalt my deepest gratitude and admiration. Your sacrifices have not gone unnoticed, and your support has been instrumental in shaping the firefighters that these graduates have become. You are the unsung heroes behind the scenes, and today, we honor you for your selfishness and dedication. As we congratulate these graduates on their remarkable achievement, let us also take a moment to applaud their families for their strength, resilience, and unwavering love. Together, you have overcome obstacles, embraced challenges, and emerged stronger than ever before. Lastly, this course would have not been possible without the countless hours and mentoring of the fire instructors. Your investment into our firefighters and their success is invaluable. I might add that we had 100% success rate for our first firefighter class, thanks to the work and dedication of everybody involved. That is no small feat. In closing, let us continue to support and uplift one another as we embark on a journey together. To the families of these graduates, thank you for your sacrifice, your support, and your true commitment. You are an integral part of the firefighting family, and we are forever grateful for all that you do. Congratulations to the firefighters, and thank you to their families. The world is a better place because of your dedication and sacrifice. Welcome to the Gibraltar family. I will have our lead instructor, Eric Thomas, say a few words and introduce each firefighter.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. On behalf of my team and all the instructors, we had an enjoyable time teaching this class. This class has been, the students have put forth a lot of effort, 110% of a lot of the classes. I've been doing this for a long time, possibly about 10 years, just doing instructing at the colleges and all throughout the state. And I will say that these were great students to have. They showed that honor and dedication of what it meant to be a firefighter, all right? There was a lot of training, and there was a lot of ups and downs we had, a lot of crying, a lot of, oh, am I going to pass this test? But they stayed the course in perseverance. None of them had any cowardice or anything with their assignment, and they took their job and their information that they were taking in to the T. And I'm actually very proud of them. And I think they worked real hard, and I will also let you know, speaking with our Region Two Chief, as far as the Michigan Firefighter Training Council, so far, this has been one of the highest class averages, so everyone know in the room, as far as Fire One, Fire Two. And they were actually very impressed and very amazed of how these ones were doing it. So I think a round of applause. All right, at this point in time, if you'd like to, want me to introduce them?
Sure.
All right. If I could have all the candidates, well, actually, not even candidates, now firefighters.
You have to, because to prove it.
Stand up. All right. And we'll start off. Liz, would you go ahead? We have one of our candidates from Rockwood. It's Liz. Liz?
I'm Liz Cady.
All right. We also have Ellen. Ellen, my favorite, right? Ellen's really, she's one of Gibraltar here in the city. She's actually tried and true, late-night study sessions, and actually helped keep the crew together and keeping everyone going. Ellen did a very good job, and we couldn't have it without her sidekick.
Rebecca Jackson.
Rebecca. I'm going to have them to have their own words, because I think they need to have a voice in this, too. Rebecca Jackson did an awesome job.
Gibraltar.
Yep, she's with Gibraltar as well, and they both actually helped keep the group together. They're like the mothers, I would say, of the group. All right. And I also have another one from Gibraltar. Kayden?
Hi.
All right. And then we have Grocelle. We have Jeff Will in the back. And we also have Carl with a K. All right. And we also have, from Rockwood, Don. Don is also, he was like our spire, our muscle inside the group, and he had some experience there, and he actually brought and contributed to the team. Everyone did on this, as far as that. They each brought an integral part to what it means to be a team, to be a firefighter, and to work towards working together, especially in mutual aid partners. Because these are your mutual aid partners, they're going to be coming in when you have a fire. And they can work simultaneous with each other, and that's what it's all about, the training, the education, and the experience. And these ones are continuing on. They're already looking for classes to keep going on, to keep their training going. So a round of applause. Good job. Good job. It's been a pleasure. I'll turn it back over to the chief. Yes, go ahead.
Do you, I see there are some instructors in the room. Would you mind introducing and thanking them, too?
Yes. Where's Dave? I'm sorry.
Instructor, stand up.
Yes. We had Dave. We had Chief McCur. And we also have one of your own, Justice there. And we also, also have some help. She will, she'll try to stay still. Stand up. Because you helped us on Saturdays. And we did also have some support from Heather, too. Heather, stand up. So it takes a team, as you can tell, to do all of this. We couldn't have done it just myself. It takes a team. The Saturdays, the practicals, the lectures, it took a team. And I want to thank you, as council and city of Gibraltar, for allowing me and my team to be able to train your firefighters and use your building and to be able to better your city. Chief.
Thank you.
I know you all have your certificates already, correct? Okay. So you're after graduation. You are all official firefighters. Woo-hoo!
Carl's 100.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, do you think it'd be appropriate, do we have a picture of them all up in front of here?
I would love that.
Yeah, we'd love a photo up front.
Can we get the chief, instructors, any other firefighter leaders in the room, as well as our new graduates, for a photo here in front? Can we all stand up?
You may just stand at my shoulders.
I don't think the camera will go that wide.
We're also missing one, Cindy. Cindy is also very important.
Yes, absolutely.
Cindy Simon.
Let's give one more round, please. Thank you. I just want to thank the leaders and instructors for the role they played, for all of our existing fire department that has worked so hard, and just congratulations and thank you, and immense gratitude for our new graduates. Appreciate all you do. Thank you. Any other words from council?
I'm just proud of them.
Yep. Congratulations. Thank you for your help.
Thank you for your service.
Service.
Thanks again, chief. Great job. I'd like to turn it over now to our public comments session. During the public comments, sorry, please, chief.
If you don't mind, could I be excused to have a little dinner with these guys?
Absolutely.
I'll take his part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Show me one.
Yeah, you do.
All right. Again, congratulations to the new graduates. And with this, I'd like to turn it over to our public comments session. During our public comments, we do have a water hardship for council this evening. Council, I know you have that information brought in your packet. I printed out another email sent from Chelsea today, just so you have a final perspective on the topic, but we'd love for the water hardship to please approach. If you could state your name and your address for us, we'd love to hear from you before council has a discussion.
Debbie Clements, 30375 Windsor, Gibraltar. I'm here representing the Cambridge Condos Association tonight. I'm their treasurer. We're, as you know, a nonprofit, or I don't know if you know, we're a nonprofit over there, and our board is all volunteers. Pretty much everybody that works on our grounds and everything's all volunteers. We're on a real tight budget, and when we got this big, huge water bill, it kind of hit us hard. And I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can do to help with, like, the sewer part of it or something, just any kind of help.
I really appreciate. Any other information you'd like to share with council? We have a lot of background in your exchange with Chelsea.
Right. We, yeah, we luckily discovered this leak when one of our residents went to go watch a football game. And so this was only five days, and five days was a $2,800 water bill. And I just, you know, this, something like this can bankrupt people so fast, just a water bill. And I don't think people really realize how bad the situation is. You know, in a three-month period, that'd have been $50,000. Had nobody gone upstairs to watch TV, we may never have noticed it. And it would have went on and on and on, and every five days, $2,800. It's crazy. It's just crazy to think of. Obviously, we don't have that kind of money in our budget. We budget $4,000 for pool water, but that's when the pool's active. And this is, you know, obviously in the winter, when the pool's not even on. So I'm here just asking if we can maybe get a break on the sewer part of it, or something, anything, anything helps.
Well, I really appreciate you for coming. I appreciate your attentiveness to the exchange with Chelsea as well. You know, our goal is to get all the data we possibly can together, so we can have a constructive, data-informed discussion on it. So council, a couple of thoughts, and you, please remain at the podium if you're willing. A couple of thoughts is, council, you see the total amount, and you also see the total amount that Chelsea had broken out on water versus sewage, and that'll be described in Chelsea's email. As she had acknowledged, there was an identified leak that was luckily, blessing, discovered.
Blessing.
Blessing that it was discovered. You know, I think I'm really proud of Chelsea and the team, because they're really taking a critical look at water bills and any spike.
Chelsea's been very helpful.
She's been phenomenal in that role in regards to monitoring the data to inform any sort of abnormality.
Right.
So the good news is, the leak was caught when it was. I asked Chelsea and DPW to work with you, or the team, to understand the specifics of it. The biggest challenge we face as a city of Gibraltar is, we have to pay for that water, and we have to pay for the sewage, right? So we are in a situation where financially, we have to pay, right? Which is obviously then passed on to the residents based on their usage. The challenge I'm facing here objectively is, the perspective from our DPW and Chelsea is that there was an identified drain and documentation, and I'm sure you're involved deeply in this exchange, but identified drain. And so what that's suggesting is that that leak, unfortunately, for the days it persisted, was going into the drain and thus our sewage, and thus our city would incur the cost for that. So I completely respect, I don't want to impose any water bill on anybody, and factually speaking, our council is doing everything we can to help, right? The challenge is that with those costs being incurred by us, we don't have an ability to waive them, and literally from our charter, right? We have to enforce them if we've incurred them. Now, if it was any other situation for which it wasn't a drain, or it was pouring elsewhere, there would be exceptional circumstances where we could look at that as a potential waiver.
Right.
We still have to pay for the water, but the sewage, we could try and rationalize, right? So I'm just being very blunt with you and honest with you, that that's the challenge we're in. What I would like council to do is have a discussion on it. I would say, I think council, I would ask council to consider a payment plan, which would spread those financial considerations over time for you. I recognize this is unexpected. The blessing is, it wasn't more. But unfortunately, we're just in a situation in the city where we have to pay for it, and therefore, we'd have to pass it on to you unless there's any way we could objectively document it didn't go into our sewage. But with that drain being there, it's pretty, it's pretty clear as to where it went, based on the experts that I'm leaning on for that.
Yeah, we have to go by that, too, because we don't know.
Exactly.
We don't know.
That's my, that's what I see, council, is I think a payment plan will absolutely be warranted. It just, you can imagine it would be subjective. We wouldn't have any way of defining how much to waive or what to waive, and it would set a dangerous precedent for the city against our charter if we didn't charge for it when we know it was used.
Right.
Yeah, and the ones that we did help in the past, they proved that it did not go in the drain, it did not go down the drain. They proved that it was.
Right.
Exactly.
It was running outside or something, and we knew it was running outside.
Precisely. If we knew it was going into the river or something, then we could obviously rationalize that we didn't incur that sewage cost. So council, I think it's a very good case, given the financial dollar amount, to consider a payment plan if you so willing, but I just, based on our charter, which we have to oblige by, we wouldn't have any wiggle room on the cost.
Well, I appreciate Don taking the time to check it all out. I mean, that's, that's great, too.
We just want to be thorough, so that we can make informed decisions.
Right.
And lean on the experts there.
Right. We're part of the city, too, so we understand. I mean, we, it's our dollars, too, both ways, so.
I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you so much. Council, it's in your court, if you want a motion for a payment plan to be extended.
Did Chelsea recommend, like, a certain amount?
It's all right. We don't, I don't need to do that.
Oh, you don't?
I don't need to, we don't need to put it on a payment plan.
Oh, okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure.
We're glad to do that if you're.
Yeah, we'll just work it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Thanks, council. Public comment is open, so please, if you have any public comment, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Justice Walden, 30726 Adams. I'm not necessarily here as a resident today, as I am a first responder, as well as a father. I'm sure most of you are probably aware of what happened on Saturday. I am a first responder down in Monroe County. My department was one of the responders to the tragic incident that happened at the Swamp Boat Club. And with this class that we just congratulated today, one of the big things that we have to deal with is mental health. It's a big responsibility. The reason why I'm up here today is, I'm not exactly sure what your process is, but just thinking on the nine people that are affected, along with the two innocent children whose lives were taken, that family's going to need some financial help. I'm not sure, as a city, if we can donate to their GoFundMe, but I wanted to bring it up and present it to the council to consider it tonight. I do know that, I'm sure our association, our firefighter association here, as well as multiple Monroe County associations, will be donating to that cause. And as far as I know, the GoFundMe that they have set up is for every single person involved, not just that specific family. So that's why they set their goal to $100,000. I think they have probably exceeded that, but I think they're going to need as much help as they can get. So that's my, that's my proposal. I don't know what you guys can do, but I wanted to push it out there.
Well, Justice, I really appreciate you for, number one, your service, two, for raising that. On the mental health front, I know it's been an active dialogue amongst our administration and chief, if anything you want to touch on there. And then I've also had discussions on DCC, our Down River Community Conference on resources for residents at large, in addition to city personnel, so we take that very seriously. And I agree with you, it's absolutely tragic to watch an event like that, and my love and thoughts go to the families that are impacted, and it's a priority, I think, on the financial support. I'll have to lean on our finance director and treasurer for any guidance on specifics there, but chief, if you want to comment on the mental health component.
You should have received an email from at least Cindy. I know I sent it to her, and I thought I sent it to everybody, but at least to her, for our emergency assistance program, our EAP, and that is mental health free of charge to you, anybody who lives in your home.
Yeah, I received that. That's not necessarily my concern tonight, this is for the family. I know that we have resources that we can lean on, and I've actually taken a couple mental health classes, and I kind of helped with that. We, I believe, at least one of these guys over here is also on the CISM team, or the, what is it, CISD? Critical Incident Stress Debrief Team. So we definitely have the resources available to us. I'm more concerned for, for the families right now.
Yeah, I think the news is all starting to come in a little, little more now of how the effects are, what's dual districts, what communities are affected. So as the more of it comes in, I think you'll see more people pull together. I, I suspect fundraisers for sure will be coming more and more, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you guys don't know, the two children that died, they were actually part of the Flat Rock Community Schools. So they are a neighboring, neighboring district that they were with, so they're Down River residents.
I greatly appreciate you coming here. I would ask if you can send me the GoFundMe information, just to make sure I can share that with all of our personnel.
And even if we can post it to the city Facebook as well.
Absolutely. Explore that with the team, absolutely. And I know Vince has got a lot of experience in financial allocations. Do you have any comment on our ability as an administration to provide funding there?
You know, local governments or governments in Michigan cannot fund something like that directly out of the city proceeds, but clearly, you know, they can support any efforts in that regard, certainly given the circumstances, so.
Okay.
I will commit to you that will raise awareness. I'll personally contribute to that, and for anybody else that is interested in participating or contributing, I'll make sure that everybody reaches that.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it, and I'm sure they'll appreciate it as well, so thank you for taking the time tonight.
Thank you so much, Justice. I appreciate it. Are there any other public comments this evening? If so, please state your name and address at the podium.
Good evening, Council. Sean LaFleur, 30744 Adams. I just wanted to add on a little bit to what Justice had just mentioned. I'm not going to mention names, but it was one of the people in this room and their parent were personally affected by this. I can't really say how, but it was close-knit. So, you know, small world. So anything that we could come up with, like Justice said, I'm sure the association, we will be doing something. So I just wanted to add on to that. So it's closer than you think.
Thank you so much for your service, and I couldn't agree anymore. And so, Justice, let's take that action, just sharing that information with me, and we can talk amongst all of us, association and broader administration, on what support we can provide, obviously given Vince's guardrails on, on public funds, but I think we'll have opportunity to at least raise awareness and contribute where we can.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I did have one of our police officers ask me this morning, and I said I'd have to reach out to Captain Steve, but Captain Steve's fundraiser was to support the Police and Fire Gym, and I don't know if there's any legalities on that, but we may be able to spend some of that if he's willing to and he's allowed to. Ask him if you, because that did happen when that event was going on, so that may be something that he's willing to do, but I'd have to ask him for sure if he's willing to.
If you can share that information with me, text or email, then I'll make sure all those parties involved get to see it and discuss it. Thank you so much.
that directly out of the city proceeds, but clearly, you know, they can support any efforts in that regard, certainly given the circumstances, so.
I will commit to you that we'll raise awareness. I'll personally contribute to that and for anybody else that is interested in participating or contributing, I'll make sure that everybody reaches that.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it and I'm sure they'll appreciate it as well, so thank you for taking the time tonight.
Thank you so much, justice. I appreciate it. Are there any other public comments this evening? If so, please state your name and address at the podium.
Good evening, counsel. Sean LaFleur, 30744 Adams. I just wanted to add on a little bit to what justice had just mentioned. I'm not going to mention names, but it was one of the people in this room and their parent were personally affected by this. I can't really say how, but it was close knit. So, you know, small world. So anything that we could come up with, like justice said, I'm sure the association, we will be doing something. So I just want to add on to that. So it's closer than you think.
Thank you so much for your service and I couldn't agree anymore. And so justice, let's take that action, sharing that information with me and we can talk amongst all of us, association and broader administration on what support we can provide, obviously given Vince's guardrails on, on public funds, but I think we'll have opportunity to at least raise awareness and contribute where we can.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I did have one of our police officers ask me this morning and I said I'd have to reach out to Captain Steve, but Captain Steve's fundraiser was to support the police and fire gym and I don't know if there's any legalities on that, but we may be able to spend some of that if he's willing to and he's allowed to. Ask him if you, because that did happen when that event was going on. So that may be something that he's willing to do, but I'd have to ask him for sure if he's willing to.
If you can share that information with me, text or email, then I'll make sure all those parties involved get to see it and discuss it. Thank you so much. Do we have any other public comment this evening? All right, that'll close our public comments. I'd like to move on to our item on consent agenda. So counsel, in your packet and in front of you, you'll see items A through F. We have item A, Bills Reference Number 20. Item B, Payroll Number 891. Item C, City Council Minutes of 482024. Item D, Planning Commission Minutes of 3192024. Item E, DDA Minutes of 3192024. And item F, Beautification Commission Minutes of 412024. Counsel, we'll be looking for a motion to approve consent agenda, items A through F.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Cosmore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Valentine. Counsel, any discussion on items A through F? Katie, can you please call roll?
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next on our agenda this evening, we have communications. I know we sent out communications to all city personnel. In item A, you'll see resignation of city treasurer Brian Harp. I'd like to just say how grateful I am for Brian Harp and everything he's done as treasurer and more broadly for the city Gibraltar. I want to respect his decision and accept his resignation letter as you see, which was effective May 1st. The broader discussion we can get into after, if we receive and file, will be how do we move forward? So counsel, we'll be looking for a motion to receive and file the resignation of city treasurer Brian Harp.
Motion to receive and file and accept the resignation of city treasurer Brian Harp.
Motion by Valentine, second by Cosmore. Any discussion?
I want to thank him for all the time that he's put into this city. He's, he's done a lot. He's a.
He's been an incredible friend and partner to the city Gibraltar.
He's got a lot of knowledge.
Incredible amount of knowledge and I want to respect his personal and professional considerations, but he's served the city tremendously and we're very, very grateful for that.
The amount of hours that he volunteered above and beyond just the bare minimum, probably one of the things he's most known for in that position.
100%. I think before we, we take roll on that, perhaps an appropriate time for a little bit of discussion here, unless you want to hold that discussion after. Katie, what do you think? We can take roll on that. I'd like to discuss next steps. Okay, cool. Let's, let's call roll. Katie?
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Great. So that will be received and filed. What I'd like to have a discussion on is how do we go forward? So counsel, I sent you an email that contained seven different names. Out of respect for the public nature of discussion now, I won't go through said names, other than to say we've received seven individuals that have expressed some level of interest and had some level of dialogue with one or more of us. So let's start there. Some of those individuals have already subsequently then stated they would withdraw from consideration. But according to our process, as you've now received and filed this motion, my understanding is there's a 10-day window for public notice posting of this position. So one step I'd recommend is to public notice this position opening for treasurer. Obviously, any selection of a candidate would be, you know, by counsel's motion and subsequent counsel approval. So I think one element of that, which is let's get this posted and work with Katie accordingly. The second thing I wanted to call out was kind of how we think about the criteria for the ideal treasurer candidate. I think before we get to the criteria, it's important to just kind of high level, what do they do for us as a city Gibraltar, generally speaking? And with my discussions with Brian and Amy, you know, it's typically making sure that the budget is available and that the dollars are rectified and that there's reconciliation in certain intervals partnered with finance director to make sure we're on track from a broader budgetary perspective. So at a high level, it's not a very time intensive role, but it's a big check and balance role for the city Gibraltar financially. And obviously hats off to Amy for all the work she's done as finance director, but they've had a beautiful partnership. When you think about this, this criteria consideration, I think at a high level, what I would consider is obviously a resident of Gibraltar. Ideally, somebody with some level of accounting or financial credentials or experience, but obviously there's flexibility there for counsel to consider, but most importantly, integrity as it relates to the checks and balances of that role. It's a big, big role from a integrity perspective and I think that's imperative. So I know that goes without saying, but really important as we go through our vetting process, but those would be the three things at a high level that I think are important to consider. So counsel, I just want to turn it over to you. I think again, in summary, one is we need to post it, so I'd ask for your advocacy in posting that publicly if Katie can help us with that. Two is I think we should consider some criteria or at least have a discussion on that today. And then three.
There's some information under our charter, what the treasurer duties should do, to do.
Yep, exactly. And so I think it's really just about as we screen candidates, like what do we really want to lean on from a experience, expertise or?
Well, I would, I know we've actually been in this situation on the school board and we had to, we had people that would submit like, kind of like a resume type thing to us and then we did, we, we had one night where we interviewed them. And then from that point, we picked out, we thought the best one. And I know, I know that's the process there, you know.
I was going to say, it's the only one person filled out an application. I don't know if that's something we're requiring them to do.
I think, I think.
Probably should fill. I would think they'd need to fill one out so we have some information about their background and that kind of thing.
I think it'd be good to discuss that tonight, which is like what information would be most important for us to receive from them as a formal application process?
I mean, you know, you know, maybe their, you know, whether their background, affiliates and things, maybe organizations they've been part of. I think they have to be a city of Gibraltar.
Yes.
They have to be a resident, so maybe how long they've been here. What else do you want to put on there? Why do they want to do it?
Yep.
I know we, we have a form like for people to fill out for like the planning commission, don't we, already?
We do.
We have that, I mean, I'll look at that and take the information from that and maybe add on one of those questions if it's not on there.
So, so counsel, I think just in the interest of time, right? We can grab that form while we might even be able to source that, but for this discussion. But I think at a high level, we could use that form and ensure it captures obviously that you're a resident and your address in the city Gibraltar, which it does. Establish why you have an interest in pursuing the treasurer position. Inquire about any affiliations or organizations that'd be relevant to that role and your background. And then what professional experience or credentials you have related to the treasurer position. Anything else you'd want to assess?
I'd like to see a resume attached to that form.
Okay. Talk to me, counsel. What do you think about those criteria? If, if we could take the action of establishing some sort of form for individuals to quote unquote apply?
I, I think that, I think we're incredibly fortunate that we've got seven people that have expressed interest. Getting people to sign up to be willing to serve prior to the last few months here has been a painstaking effort to get people to fill the boards. So the fact that we have this many people that are putting their hands up and raising their hands and expressing interest is a, is a great thing. I think whatever we ask them to submit should be pretty short and sweet. Keep, keep it, keep it relatively minimal.
Does everybody align with Councilman Mulner? Do you think that those kind of key areas we just listed, are those reasonable for inclusion?
Absolutely.
All right, is everybody aligned with that?
I do concur with Councilman Mulner's statement. I also, let's note that this is normally elected position, so having some criteria or behind it, I struggle with when it could be based on what the citizens want at that point when they're elected. So outlining credential requirements concerns me on that. I mean, obviously take them into consideration, but understand that this is normally elected position, so it's for the citizens to put in place.
Which they will be. I mean, they're only going to serve in that position until the next, in the next election.
Yep, that's a good point. There'll be some, and I'd be open to any ideas if you think about a good way to assess public support, but I think the beauty of this is in our unique scenario here in a middle of an administration, to your point, they serve till the next election for which they would then have an option to run.
They could be run if they wanted or whoever wants to run can run for it.
Councilman Cox, do you agree with Councilman Mulner that those areas that we're assessing, at least for applicant purposes, would be appropriate?
I do.
All right, cool. So let's do that. So I guess I'd like to just, just to formalize this approach, if we could, I'd like to make, get a motion if counsel is willing and able, which would state, post the public notice and put out the associated information we're hoping to receive from applicants and then maybe Katie can receive those applicants unless somebody has any other?
One thing I think we should be somewhat careful in that it's not, not necessarily an applicant for the job, it is, it is an appointment to serve the remainder. And I don't know if that's important or not, that they're, they're putting their hat in the ring, not as an applicant for, for a job per se, but, but, you know, requesting consideration for appointment.
Yeah, volunteering to serve their community.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I don't know whether that semantic is important or not, but I just.
We could call it like background information on the candidate or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we ask background on for the people that's applying for the other committees that we have.
Yeah, and I think this criteria that we're asking for is completely legitimate.
I mean, you don't have to be, you know, like I said, super, super.
I think it's good because it helps drive a relative decision when we have a pool of candidates or?
Yeah, because this, you know, normally if you had, now if we're electing them, we have a lot of people that have their ideas with us, it's just going to be us. So we have to have some background knowledge because, you know, like you might know who comes in, but I don't know anything about them, you know what I mean? And same with me, I might know one that comes in that you guys don't know. So it's important that we get to know a little bit about them before we vote who we're bringing in.
Well said. Councilman Valentine?
Should this be another committee established to make this election and then go before the council?
I would, I would, because I know once they come in, I would like to be able to ask them a couple of questions and so I think everybody should be able to.
It'll be an open meeting?
I think, I think it's reasonable to just have them show up to all council.
City administrator.
I always want to be mindful of the number of committees that we create and the purpose. So I think for that line of thinking, I think it'd be appropriate for all of council, given it's a critical role for the administration and elected position traditionally to come in front of us once we've gotten some information for everybody.
So Katie, when, with the treasurer, would they be elected in November? Or would they have time to get their ballot in?
No, it's next November 2025. This would be fulfilling the term, the current term.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure, yeah, because I wasn't sure if it was like the next election or the, at the end of that.
Next regular city election.
They would serve until, yeah, 25 and until election would pursue. Okay, great. Counsel, would we have a motion for posting the opening and assessing or gathering, I should say, the volunteers' information?
I'll make a motion to gather information or?
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Motion by Cosmore, second by McNabb. Any discussion, anything we missed on this? And hopefully this process could, in theory, reconvene us at the May 13th meeting, next council meeting.
And a 10-day window.
Which will satisfy a 10-day window and allow us some time to gather some information. To our residents out there, you heard it, we're looking for our next treasurer of the city Gibraltar to serve this community. So if you have interest and a skill set or anything you think you would offer to that position, please make sure that that background information gets to Katie and thus counsel. Great. So we have a motion, we have second. Katie, can you please call roll?
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
All right. Well, that closes out our communications. I'll turn over to my report this evening. Really excited on all fronts and I'll just talk you through a few of these items. First off, resident survey. Special shout out to Nathan Browning, if you're listening. Nathan is a founder and experienced survey, market research company and has done some municipal work, so a very valuable mindset and experience and expertise and has a passion for Gibraltar because he's grown up here. And so I'm just incredibly grateful for Nathan for providing feedback on the survey that counsel had started to craft. So I'm going to just walk through at a high level some of Nathan's feedback. Counsel, what I'd like to do is during this discussion, to make it as focused as possible, I'm going to walk you through Nathan's recommendations. I shared this all with you via email and a word document with the comments. It's a pretty complex document, so it wouldn't be effective printing out for you because all the comments are hidden on the right side. But I'm going to walk through the comments and counsel, what I'd ask is, as we go through this, I'm going to relay where we've landed based on Nathan's decisions. And if you have any objection, I'd like you to speak up, but the goal would be to align us to the content tonight, if you so feel that's appropriate, so that we can pass it to Nathan to build the survey monkey or whatever methodology, just so that we can now react to a clean version for which perhaps counsel could all test and play with and assess. So that's the goal this evening, but if there's any objections or we feel we need more time or more discussion, please speak up. So the first question, in what age range do you fall? I'm going to be very succinct here in stating that basically what Nathan had landed on, you'll see this reflected in his comments, is make the groupings to include alignment with the consensus or the census. So the beauty is you can take the age brackets that you choose and make them tie to the census. Now you can make smaller subcuts, but you just want to make sure that the ranges that you can consolidate to align with the census. So that was fruitful feedback because then you can compare that to the census information as relates to broader population research that's been done. Number two is he recommended to include gender. If counsel has any objections, he recommended include that. He also said you could consider as a third demographic, ethnicity. Now, I, I feel like with the age and gender, it's probably very important information. I don't know if counsel has any feelings on inclusion of ethnicity in that survey? So I'll stop there. I guess we want to be mindful of the length of the survey. That's a pretty quick question to answer, but don't know if anybody has any perspective one way or another. I would say we stick with age and gender for the sake of succinct survey, which would align with Nathan's feedback. The second item, second question, sorry, any objections to that, number one. Second item is going to be, and you'll see this in the comments from Nathan, how long have you lived in Gibraltar? Just to avoid typos. Somebody throws three hundred years and they meant to say thirty years, right? That's going to throw your data off. So you can, you can control this with the functionality. Any objections to that second question?
No.
Third question, I thought he had some really good feedback here. So I know, third question was, what are Gibraltar's most positive aspects? If you recall, we said top three, top five. That was a discussion we had. Do you do pre-populated responses or do you do open comment box? You'll see Nathan comments in here, and I spoke with him this morning. What the recommendation is, is to ask, what are Gibraltar's most positive aspects? Do not use pre-populated responses. That eliminates a large visual length, right? It also eliminates potential bias, but to include three comment boxes. And what he says is, and I do this professionally often, is you can use a lot of these AI tools, ChatGPT has one tool specifically, where you can now take those three comment boxes and the data, and then you analyze it through this AI technology, ChatGPT, to distill down the key themes and key areas of priority. So the analysis allows you to take those comment boxes and basically have a clear assessment of the priority across our population and respondents. He also said I wouldn't force rank them. Because remember, we talked about going one, two, or three? He said, you're looking at the population interest. So if you're asking somebody for the top three, don't make them say one, two, and three. Just make them list three. And then that way, you're aggregating their three from all the respondents' three to see what the top priorities are from the AI analytical capability, if that makes sense. So that was one of his recommendations. Does anybody have objections to that? We also talked about the language there, if you recall. What are Gibraltar's most positive aspects? He said, keep that language because it aligns to the prior survey done. So that way, you could have year-over-year comparison as you see fit. Any objections on that one? The other note was, I thought he had some good feedback on the methodology. So Survey Monkey or other tools you can use, I mentioned it already. It's got validation methods. So you can build the question where it focuses the responses to reduce errors. So no letters, certain digits, et cetera, which will help all these. You can also limit your comment boxes to certain text characters. Okay, so that was that one. The, for the next question, what are Gibraltar's least favorable aspects? He basically said, just apply the same thing as you did for the positive to this one. So make it three comment boxes. Don't ask for one, two, and three. Just what are the three least favorable aspects? And then you're able to then with the AI tools, ChatGPT, analyze it to showcase what are the priorities across the responses. Any objections to that one? All right. Next one is, this is a really good discussion. I want all council's feedback. This is a really important one. So what he said, remember, we talked about what statement do you agree with more? Right? And there were some of these vision statements. So the statement could be Gibraltar's future should be focused on providing more for those that are already here. Or Gibraltar's future should be focused on creating and developing destinations that attract more visitors. What he said, which I thought was really insightful, was those are very, and I think many on this council had suggested that as well, right? Those are very like hard spectrum stances, right? One or the other. What he said, which I really liked, was use those statements, tweak the second one, which was now stating attract more visitors, to attract more residents. The reason is, is the reason he said that was because then it's a parallel to the first statement, right? And then what he said, which I really liked, was make those statements ratable. So strong, very strongly agree or very strongly disagree. And that way, somebody doesn't have to choose one or the other, meaning they could very strongly agree and slightly disagree. But it gives you a perspective on where they stand on both fronts. Because they're hard statements. They're polar statements, right? So somebody could still have a middle ground. It's, you can't force fit them into one bucket. I love that feedback. I agree with that. And then the third thing was he said was also have none of the above, meaning none of them resonate with me, and ability for them to put in their own comments or their own statement. So I like that because it seemingly helped reduce somebody to have to choose a side. What do you agree with more? It's just like, please rate your agree-ness on both of these, right? And then you can say where you stand. And you might have both that you agree with, meaning you want people to stay here, but you want new development to attract new residents, right? Does that resonate with everybody? I thought it was clever way of kind of making that question a little more fair balance, but.
No, I think it makes sense because there's.
But there's lots of digests there. Any objections with that kind of approach? So basically tweak the second statement, so it's going to be aligned with the first one. So it's not that attract more visitors, it's that attract more residents. So it's aligned and fair with the first statement. And then make it a very strongly agree versus very strongly disagree rating scale, so they can rate both of them where they fit. And then have none of the above, so that you don't force somebody in any question. Any objections with that approach? Again, you'll get to react to this now. So like, we'll build the survey and then you can react to it before anything is discussed for dissemination. Okay. The next question was, what is Gibraltar missing? He said, just leave it open ended as we had, and then we can use that same AI tool to analyze the responses. I thought he had some clever suggestions on the next one. So if you recall, remember, we said like the city council took action to prohibit short-term rentals, less than thirty-one days, or sorry, thirty days in the R1 residential areas. Do you feel short-term rentals, example, Airbnb should be allowed in the R1? What he said was, make sure that you have as much qualifying information for all these as possible. So like, if you want to include ordinance language, for example, or if you want to, out of our committee, if the committee has a proposal, because we say like under regulated thresholds is a consideration, right? Well, then include the proposal. Because then it gives people a choice. Like, what is under regulated thresholds? It is X, Y, and Z, this threshold, this number, this whatever. So I think we should, should think about that one. Is like, can we get any more qualifying information? I know Councilwoman Cosmore, you mentioned that. But like, then it's a direct assessment of what we're facing. We prohibited them. So where do we want to go? If there's a proposal for something else, it's got to come from planning and council, right, to review. But this would be a great way to have resident perspective on the specifics of any proposal. So I thought that was clever. On the, do you feel RV parks should be allowed in the state of Gibraltar? Obviously, planning just took action and recommended as they did, which we'll talk about. But he said, you know, some of the things like should be allowed or should not be allowed, being, being able to qualify both of those in the same sentence, if that makes sense, allows people to then have a fair balance assessment of it. Like, should they be allowed, yes or no, versus the framing of the question you'll see in there? I put it in there, but like, he's, he was suggesting a tweak in the question. Now, that's still a question we can assess. Obviously, it's in our court, and I think planning has spoken on the topic, for, at least for a recommendation for us. But it's something to consider on just tweaking the language slightly, so the question is reading more fair balance. It's not leading to, should we allow, should we or should we not allow? Do, and then the last one we talked about with food options, we said we're going to scratch. So that, that one's relevant there. Any objections of the tweaks there? So what I can do is I can work with Councilman Molnar and Cosmore. I know, Cosmore, I think you had received some level of communication there, to make sure we tweak the language so that it's a very clear assessment against that, a short-term rental one. And then for the RV parks, we can tweak that question, just per Nathan's suggestion, and then we'll, we'll scratch the third bullet. Any objections there? The last one was, is there anything else you'd like to share? It's a comment box. Think we could leave that one there. I think it's a good way to assess. If we missed something that was important to somebody, they didn't feel they have an opportunity to voice. And then this one I thought was clever. So we, we talked about considering asking the question, this is the last one, by the way. What do you expect from or how do you feel about your city services? His suggestion was be descriptive. So like, what, like list your city services, and then you can have those rated.
Can you do like a chat box or just like a number rating?
So, so no, it'd just be a rating scale. So like, you know, very favorable to not favorable, right? Or like however you want to list that. But we, basically, we'll just take our actual city services, list them versus the overarching question. That way, you can assess each one across a rating scale, which I thought was clever, because then it's more descriptive. Otherwise, people might interpret city services in different ways.
Yeah, they might like one service and not another, you know, so.
So I like that suggestion. It's pretty focused. And that way, we can focus our energies or efforts towards the feedback on a specific lane of city service. So that was it. I thought he had really great comments. I think what I would ask is with your support, I'd like to just get this into a Survey Monkey so that you all can play with it, test it, see what it looks like, see how it length. We could test the length. We can see if the functionality looks good. And then we could talk about, on May thirteenth, after you've had time to test it, we could talk about where we want to go from here. And if we feel like it's ready for any level of dissemination discussion.
Yeah.
But I'll stop there.
One of the comments that I, that I seen here is that his concern about, about this, that we might get even less representative than the previous survey. And, you know, where, where, how do we measure that? And what do we think about that?
Yeah, it was a, thank you. It was a discussion that was around the dissemination methods. What, I guess what, which is a really good point. Sorry, I didn't bring that up. Dissemination methods, what he was basically saying, if I recall, and again, we can probably bring him here for the thirteenth to talk about some of this, hopefully. And I think he's a little farther away, but maybe even dial in or something. But what he was saying was, if you lean towards one methodology, like social or digital or another, right? You could bias the demographic of your responses, meaning only younger or only older demographics are responding, which could thus not give you a representative sample. I think the good news is, and we talked about it with this, this morning, was we, we are hoping to do a multi-pronged approach, meaning put it in print. We had some residents even volunteer to door-to-door it. We have social and digital opportunities. So I guess his, our discussion, and I'm glad to bring him up to say this firsthand, was if we, if we multichannel the approach, then the data would then showcase how many age brackets and gender representation we hit, so that we can make a more informed decision on it being representative. Versus going versus for one distribution method where you could bias the responses in a younger or older. That was the comment there. But I can, we can bring him in or at least maybe set up another phone call if council wants with him when we, when we get ready to discuss dissemination methods.
No, these guys are really good suggestions.
I thought so. I thought it was really good. And I think it, it addresses head-on some of the areas that we were not sure about, you know?
Exactly.
What do you think, counsel? Is everybody open to putting this in a survey link just to take a look at as council, and then we can talk about it May thirteenth? And if Nathan's willing, we can either have a meeting beforehand with any council members interested, or we could bring him virtually or whatever, just to talk about dissemination considerations? So everybody, any objections to that approach? Okay. Well, I'm going to, if it's, if, if everybody's supportive, then it seems like I'll just have this put into Survey Monkey. And then we can share with all council via Katie, if that's okay. And you can just play with it. And then if anybody wants to meet with Nathan directly, just let me know, and we can get a meeting together to talk with him. And I think Rob brings up a good point on the distribution methods, like how do we make sure we're not going on this effort and not getting representative sample? Which I would lean on him heavily for.
Pretty awesome that he volunteered his time to do this, and his feedback was, yeah, pretty colloquial.
I'm super grateful.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Nathan, thank you if you're listening, and we look forward to getting the survey in front of council. All right, counsel. Next item is going to be our city administrator. I'm incredibly excited. And Vince, would you like to speak to this, or would you like me to speak to this?
I can just give you a little update at this point. The candidate, you know, Ryan Mattis, you know, I think is, you know, certainly interested in the position. I talked with him this afternoon. Certainly excited about, you know, the community and the projects the city will be working on. The one concern he seemed to stress was housing and his housing transition. So, you know, I think that's the update with the conversation I had with him this afternoon, so.
And just to make sure we're all on the same page for the broader public is notice as well. Obviously, we had a slate of candidates. We got down to four candidates that were formally interviewed by council. We then shortlisted two candidates. One of the two candidates withdrew, the applicant, stating that they were, upon reflection, going to pursue another role potentially in, in a different lane than city administrator, for which we are now sitting here with one candidate. That candidate, I want to make sure if we do decide as council this evening that there's unanimous support. I think that's absolutely critical. I don't want to make a decision that's not unanimously supported by everybody in this room. So let's start there. I think based on the public interviews that were done, I think there's a strong skill set, a strong culture fit potential, a relevant experience in certain areas that are directly impacting Gibraltar, which Vince and others have directly uncovered. A second interview performed by our committee to further gather intel. I feel really good about it.
Yeah, he, he really impressed me on that, that second interview. And then the more we talked, the more we found out, he does have some bridge experience. He does have experience with the water. He, you know, he, he brought out a lot more in that second interview than when he did the first one. And I said, the more I listened to him, the more I was impressed with him. I think he would be a really good fit here. I really do.
I do too. And I, we've consulted all the broader city personnel in the office just for their perspectives, right? And I think there's a pretty general consensus that that would be a good fit for our city. Counsel, I think what your decision point is tonight is, I don't want to make this decision if it's not fully unanimous. So if there's anybody that is not going to support that candidate, I don't think that's the right discussion to be having. I want, you'd also recognize that if we do, there is somebody that's against that candidate, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and really look at this critically. And so it's going to cost us more time and, and resources. But I want to make sure we're doing it right, not rushed. So let's start there. So is there any objections to this candidate being the next city administrator for the city of Gibraltar?
Want a motion?
Before we get to that motion, this is the motion I would ask, which is, we still have information to gather and work to do. So we need a background check. We need to negotiate salary. We need to discuss specifics on transition timing. So I would ask that the motion is just inclusive of that. So motion contingent, or motion to pursue as a committee, background check, finalization, you know, compensation negotiation, and formal start, start date alignment. So that's the three steps. Now, that's what we need to go out and do as a committee. We know what our, our, you know, financial capacity is, right? We know what Vince's timing is, and he's been above and beyond awesome and flexible in this process. And we, I think, know what we expect from our city administrator and representation of the city of Gibraltar in context of whatever finances we think will be able to provide them. So with that being said, I think that's the work we need to do.
Yeah, because he did indicate he probably couldn't start till like the beginning of July, because he wants to give a city the thirty-day notice that they should, which I give him credit for that. That just shows his character right there. And then time to move because he's got a family, you know? So he's having to move his whole family down, you know, so.
And I don't want to put you in any spot, Vince, but how's your headspace on the transition, if you're willing to comment on that?
I'm still flexible. I, you know, I'm willing to go beyond, obviously, May tenth. So it's just, it may take a couple of days here or there off, but, but I'm fine to make it, make it fit for the city and the new administrator.
I think we're really lucky to have Vince in that capacity, and he expressed his ability to stay on in a more, more full-time, focused capacity in that window to extend your schedule out. So I appreciate that a lot.
Appreciate it.
And obviously, counsel, we can then consider how that relates to the part-time role that Vince has been going to play based on your motion. So we need a motion for those three items from council if you so chose, and I want to make sure it's unanimous, which it seems like it is.
Quick, quick question on the procedure. Are we making the motion, a secondary motion on appointment after we get those things, or is this the motion of the appointment?
That's a good.
It should be a conditional appointment, subject to, you know, the background check, negotiating employment agreement, you know? Yeah, yeah. It is, you know, what would technically be called a conditional appointment.
So a motion, so a motion on the floor, if council chooses, it would be a conditional appointment with a focus on committee discussing background check, financial compensation, and start date alignment. Let's have the council for that motion.
Motion to appoint Ryan Mattis, condition, motion to conditionally appoint Ryan Mattis pursuant to a background check, employment notice, and salary to.
Negotiations.
Negotiation.
Second, support.
Second by Cosmore. So motion by Valentine, second by Cosmore. Counsel, any other discussion, or do we like the path we're on? I'm incredibly excited about it. Great. Katie, can you please call roll?
Schumay.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Cosmore.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Molnar.
Yes.
Great. Motion carried. Congratulations on the conditional appointment. Ryan, we're incredibly excited to have you in Gibraltar pending those items that we discussed. And the committee will be in touch shortly. Thank you. Next item on my list is another exciting one. We want to make sure we have the right people in the right seats. So just want to have a candid discussion this evening with council. You already have information in your packet. You'll see that PCK is not sitting next to me, because we've informed PCK that we are going in a different direction pending council's approval for our city attorney services. I'm really excited about this one. We had a wealth of responses to the RFP. We met with four different firms. We had a committee that pretty exhaustively discussed said interviews with the four different firms. And we landed on a unanimous perspective amongst the committee on the one through four that's in your packet. Out of respect for everybody, party involved, I'm not going to go into the specific details, other than to say the committee is coming to you, counsel, with a recommendation for Mr. Anthony Bologna. You'll see the salary or financial compensation that's put in place, and we've proposed a flat bill structure, which we think is very advantageous for the financial operation of the city of Gibraltar. For those that have seen the analytics there, we've had some peak years in some of our legal service utilization. So allowing us to establish a flat billing structure with Mr. Anthony Bologna, if you so chose, will allow our finance director to have consistency in the monthly spend. We use data, and thank you, huge thanks to Councilman Molnar and Amy and others for all the work in gathering the data, as well as the broader committee members, Mr. Valentine, for their, their partnership in, in getting to where we are today. So we have a recommendation. Now, let's talk about it. As I mentioned, the seat is empty with me while we were expecting somebody in the seat this evening. They're not here tonight. Mr. Anthony Bologna would be ready, willing, and able to come into the office as early as this Thursday to have an onboarding discussion. We could then, if we, council so chose, basically, we'd be looking for a motion to appoint Anthony Bologna as our new city attorney. That motion would then be effective, the appointment would be effective on Thursday, which will allow us to then prorate the remainder of April under our flat billing proration. And then he would start sitting in the seat May thirteenth, and he would be at every single council meeting. Just for a high-level background, Mr. Anthony Bologna is the city attorney for the, for the city of Trenton. And has, will be our leading representation, obviously, for both council chambers and all other interactions that we may request legal services. Chief.
That this Thursday he was, he was coming in?
That's correct.
So we have court this Thursday. So we would have to know who's going to be our prosecutor and attorney for court this Thursday.
And, and that's another layer of it. Do you have something?
Yeah, I, I think I, Mr. Bologna would, would start effectively tomorrow. He just won't be there for the meet and greet until then. So we will pass along, make sure that Attorney Hurley passes along his files to Attorney Bologna, so that he's prepared on Thursday to handle those cases.
Those files are usually held at court anyway, so they just pick them up, so.
Okay.
And I think we, we've had a lot of dialogue with all parties involved. I would hope for a very smooth handoff and transition and open collaboration, but obviously, we'll navigate it. However, those two firms are able to work together through that process. So, so on that note, again, we, I'm really excited about it. I think it's an incredible move for the state of Gibraltar. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Anthony Bologna and what I think he'll do for our legal services, and we have pretty unanimous committee and obviously internal feedbacks. We've had this with our internal department staff as well, some of which Katie or Amy were on the set committee. So I'd be looking for a motion.
So is it effective tomorrow then?
So let's talk about that. Do we, you, you had the last discussion with him. Do you think tomorrow would be the start date to allow the preparation work for court and/or our onboarding meeting on Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. So it would be effective Tuesday, April twenty-third would be the appointment, which would allow us to then prorate from then to the end of April and then start our monthly billing practices on May first.
And then also, in his proposal, he had as his partner Amelia Zelenak.
Yep.
To fill in for him.
Absolutely. So thank you, Katie. So Amelia would then be supporting Mr. Bologna. And if he were ever unavailable, would step in to, to service that role.
Would it be easier for him to start May first, or would you rather start, him start earlier?
Well, I think we have the complexity of the court on Thursday, so we need to have some representative there. And the previous firm waived their thirty-day notice requirement. So really, I think for all smooth operations, I think having him start at least handle that and get acquainted with the files that, that we've got to address. Tomorrow makes sense. I mean, appointment effective today or tomorrow?
Yeah. I would say let's, the appointment motion I would ask for is effective tomorrow. Appointment, and that way, we get rocking and rolling on the work that needs to be done.
I just wasn't sure if it's better to keep, you know, our old ones until the May first and then start, but.
Yeah, Mr. Bologna would have attempted to be here tonight, but since we just found out today of the representation, we wanted to make sure that we notified him. And he said he could be here at the next council meeting, but could start, as Mr. Molnar mentioned, tomorrow to prep for Thursday.
I will, I will just say, I, I found out that yesterday.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
And I do like the flat rate. I think that will help our budget easier. I think it'd be easier for our staff to, if they need to call a question, you know? They need to call a lawyer for a question, they'd be able to do that and without having to check, you know, probably do that, so.
Great. So we'd be looking to council for a motion for the. So we'd be looking to counsel for a motion for the appointment of Mr. Bologna to be the next city attorney of Gibraltar, effective April 23rd.
If nobody else wants, I'll make the motion that we appoint Anthony Bologna, city attorney, effective tomorrow, April 23rd.
Who's first?
McNabb.
Second by McNabb. Any further discussion? Well, I'm incredibly excited. Katie, can you please call roll?
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Shuva?
Yes. All right, Shuva report. There's a lot of information captured in your packet, and I actually tried to whittle down said information to not make it too overwhelming. I'm nerding out because I get to learn about Shuva on the board, and I don't know anything about sewage coming into this, so it's been a fascinating journey. And hats off to the Shuva management and all the other city, I would say, elected officials or appointed officials for helping me through that learning curve. But what I want to say is a couple things. First off, we're here, and we've been here since November 13th, sworn into our position, some of you for longer, but there's been a lot of work by a lot of individuals over time that led us to today in regards to our sewage infrastructure. And so I just, I do want to nod to former mayor Jim Gores, former mayor Scott Dennison, all of the names that I could laundry list on, people that just really made some tough decisions at the time, but right decisions to invest in infrastructure improvements such as sewer, sewer lining work, as well as establishing our position in Shuva. Thank you. Thank you if you're listening. Incredibly grateful for that. Why I say that is because we are lucky, and I'm really proud of the work we've done so far in this administration and some of the infrastructure improvements that have been made, and our focus on sewer lining amongst water main replacement. Obviously, we got $1 million from Senator Peters and Congresswoman Dingle on a new water main. What I would say is, really excited to announce that we're getting a, a check from Shuva at the next board meeting to the City of Gibraltar for $210,357.01. And that refund from Shuva is a reflection of Mother Nature being kinder, sewer lining work to improve our sewage infrastructure, and the associated utilization on the look-back report. So it's an incredibly exciting news for the City of Gibraltar. Significant money that we will now receive back in May that will help support, obviously, the broader operation, the capital improvement needs, the meter replacements, everything else that we have to do to sustain the path ahead. So huge win for the City of Gibraltar. I was ecstatic, and I can't wait to grab that check and bring it back to Amy to make sure that we balance the books appropriately. But I'm incredibly excited, and again, thank you to all of those that I mentioned and so many more that played a role in making tough decisions at the time that we are gonna continue to benefit from, and we're gonna continue to improve as we discuss at our infrastructure advisory committee amongst many other forums.
Future savings too.
It's, it's, the trend is very positive for the City of Gibraltar, and I'm incredibly excited about it. The second thing I want to announce on that note is, you'll see in your flow report, 8.9%. So we are continuing to track from a flow meter percent utilization incredibly well. And so that's the high-level summary. Those are the two headlines. We're on the right path at 8.9% this month, as far as the last month goes, report, which is in your packet, and we're gonna have a very nice check, come back to City of Gibraltar, which will be huge. We've been trending high, just transparency on the water budget with the meter replacements required and other capital improvement considerations, so this will be a huge help for the City of Gibraltar. And our goal is to make these savvy investments continuously because the money in has high ROI. We're gonna save money, and we're trending well with Shuva, and I really, I'm excited about the path we're on. So thank you to all those that helped make today possible, and I look forward to bringing that check back to us. Any questions on Shuva? All right, that's all from my report this evening, unless there's any other comments. I'm gonna come back in for one of the later topics, one of the second readings, but until then, I'd like to get to counsel reports. Councilman Valentine, why don't you talk to us about Recreation Commission?
Yes, I don't have a report today. Director Tammy Gores is here, so we'll let her speak.
Amazing. Tammy, would you like to speak on behalf, or should we wait to her session, you're saying? Perfect, okay, great. We'll, we'll wait to your session. Thank you, Councilman Valentine. Any questions for Councilman Valentine? Councilwoman Cosmore?
All right. For ADW, I have a meeting on May 21st, so I haven't reported on that until then. And then as for the 33rd District Court, I do have a meeting on the end of April, on April 29th. They're gonna finally be hitting a parking lot, so I don't know if you've been over there and seen how bad it is. We'll be working on that, on the meeting. As far as the Rotary goes, everybody, please look, May 1st, the kayak tickets will go on sale, and they usually sell out within a day or two, so as soon as that hits, if you want a ticket, you better, you better buy it right away. And right now, we're doing a sportsman's card gift raffle, and if you want to buy tickets, City Hall has them, right? You guys have tickets?
Yes, we do.
They have them, and you can also see any Rotary member, it's $20. It's the former, it's the former Gunnady Raffle. So it's a really good raffle, you can win anywhere from like $300 to $500 a day, and it goes for the whole month of September, so that $20, you could win more than once. And for the Kiwanis, we are, tomorrow is our big awards ceremony where we'll be honoring some of the kids at Carlson High School, my favorite thing of the year, it's a lot of fun. And next week, we will be meeting at Parsons, so we're working with the Lighthouse Club to, we're gonna be doing a pet drive, so. Can I bring a box in next week? So there will be a box at City Hall if you want to drop off things for the animal shelters, and I'll be putting stuff out on Gibraltar pages about that, but, you know, they, they need food, collars, bowls, anything that, for the animals that can use. There'll be a box here at City Hall to drop it off, and that's in conjunction with the Lighthouse Club at Parsons.
Awesome. Lots of exciting stuff.
Yeah, a lot of stuff going on right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cosmore. Any questions for her? Councilwoman Wood, talk to us about Beautification Commission and Historical Museum.
Okay, starting with beautification, I am going to talk a little bit about Spring Cleanup Day, which is May 11th. It's nine to noon, pizza lunch for all volunteers, and we hope we get a lot of volunteers. Weather permitting, it's always iffy for Cleanup Day. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's raining, but we have a couple of projects. We want to paint the Boblo Outbuilding, since we did the Boblo Pavilion last year. And then we want to put some weed barrier and mulch down around the trees, all around the Boblo Pavilion. DPW wanted to help with that, and try to make it look like it did before. It was a little bit more finished than it looks now, but we don't have very many volunteers. So hopefully, May Cleanup Day on the 11th, we get some people to come out and actually, you know, come and help, have something to eat, and go from there. There's other small projects, you know, kids can pick up sticks or whatever around the parks, things like that, simple things for the kids to do, but we did have projects, and we do get some court workers that day, some extra people. So, you know, we need all the help we can get. So that's beautification. And then I wanted to add to our museum, because the last council meeting, I had thanked a few people for helping and the startup of our museum and encouraging me to keep going forward. So tonight, I want to just thank a few more people that really deserve credit for what I'm doing up there. I'm gonna start with Rusty Davis and Bill Saul from the River Razor National Battlefield Park in Monroe, along with the Wind Out of Anderton Grand Chief Ted Roll. They have helped me a lot with the War of 1812, the Brownstown Battle we have upstairs. They were very helpful with that. And the maps that we have up there from the 1800s are from Rusty and Bill. They actually did the research on that and helped me get the copies, so that was a big project right there. I want to thank Jeff Wager, who's Trenton's Historical Museum, and they're redoing their museum, so hopefully, when that's done, everybody goes and checks that out. They're changing the whole format from what it was. And then last on this list is Leslie Harkey and Lila Vadakhovitz. Hopefully, I said that right. They're from the Flat Rock Historical Museum, and all of these people have, have contributed one way or another, whether it's their information, or just telling stories, or they have extra items, you know, that we didn't have copies of. So a lot of stuff is going into putting this all together. And on that note, I want to say, let me see here, at the Flat Rock Flea Market is going to be at the Flat Rock Speedway on May 5th, and that opens at 7:00 AM. So that's their moneymaker for their Flat Rock Museum. So if you're there at 7:00 AM, and you can go through the whole thing and still be here from 2:00 to 4:00 for our 12th anniversary at our museum, so you can do that all in one day. That's all I have to say.
I love it.
Thank you.
Exciting milestone coming up. I appreciate you for all the work you've done there. Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Councilwoman Wood? Councilman Cox, talk to us about Life and Planning Commission, DDA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the Planning Commission, first, there was a motion by the Planning Commission to request the city planner to draft out ordinance language permitting agriculture, farm use, and an R1 zoning district. So this is the northwest corner of Jefferson and Middle Gibraltar Road. An applicant came in or requesting to see what the level of encouragement was by putting a horse stable there. So that was discussed at length, and the commission put forward to the planner to draft up some special approval use for that parcel based on a minimum of 25 acres and one horse per acre. So that falling in an R1, you're not gonna find many opportunities within our community to find where there's over 25 acres or 25 acres to use in that. So the Planning Commission has authorized the city planner to do that. That's regarding the Planning Commission. Onto the DDA. The DDA approved the request to add the project, a resolution approval for additional projects to be paid with the 2023 downtown development bonds. The surplus money that was found in that, we are trying to designate towards projects that are on the high-hit list. Those projects were outlined and added to that language to assure that we could utilize those funds in the right way. So that's my report.
Love it. Thank you so much for all that you and the commissions are doing. Any questions for Councilman Cox? Councilman McNabb, want to talk to us about Waterways?
Well, Waterways, Commissioner Garza reached out to me this week and said that they're working very hard. It's first on his table for our weed harvester. Has to go out to bid for two other companies, anything over $150,000 or whatever. The bid has to go out to three other companies. I think there's only two interested, and we will be having a meeting here in May with the fellas.
That's awesome.
And that's about all I have right now, but it sounds like, he says, I called him up. He says, we're first in line. He's working hard for us, so.
That is fantastic. Thank you so much for all you're doing on that. Any questions for Councilman McNabb? All right, Councilman Mulnar?
Thank you, Your Honor. My only thing to talk about was our wonderful fishing walleye tournament that, that we had over the weekend, Saturday. Captain Steve put together, I don't know how many hours he must have put into that, but what a turnout. There was over 200 fishermen. Over 200 people came to join and just eat. The amount of volunteers cleaning fish and filleting and cooking really was a test, is a testament to our community. The amount of people that came out to support, you know, Steve put together this program four years ago, and each year has steadily risen. I won't steal his thunder, on May 13th, he's going to come here and, and present a contribution to the police department specifically. So for three years, he, he worked hard to put this program together and kept getting, getting better and better and bigger and bigger. So in three, the first three years, he raised $26,000 and donated to our fire department here. This year, he switched to the police department, put a ton of time and effort into it, and hopefully, we can have that on the agenda for our May 13th meeting and allow him to share the success in person.
Awesome.
Yeah. Cool.
Great event for the city, congrats.
And Tim did not win first place.
What place did you come in?
Oh. I got last, oh god. And as, as my family calls me, fish repellent. It was a fun time.
Great cause, thank you for the update, and congrats to all those involved in making it happen. Any questions for Councilman Mulnar?
No, just reiteration, it was a fantastic time. It was great to be with the community that way. It was, it was great.
Really special and really well executed.
Yes.
As you alluded. All right. Katie, our clerk, is gonna represent our interest here in the next section. So Katie, I'll turn the floor to you, and then I'll make some comments on item B before you get there.
Okay, our first item is a second reading by title only, and subsequently, the adoption of ordinance number 421, which is an update to our International Property Maintenance Code. We had our first reading on, I believe it was January 22nd. So I'd be looking for a motion for the second reading. Can we move forward?
Vince, I don't know if you have anything to add here?
No, I think that, you know, we discussed it at our last meeting, maybe a couple meetings ago, but, you know, reviewing some of the comments from Councilmember Mulnar and.
Tina.
Tina that is here, you know, clearly, I think it's good to adopt tonight with the understanding that we'll come back and probably take a few items out that are not, you know, that are standard in the International Property Maintenance Code that's not specific for Gibraltar. And I mentioned that a couple meetings ago, and that, and actually, some of the things in here you can see in the ordinance are included in there, but I think a deeper dive regarding the administrative process, what board and committee is gonna be responsible for any appeals, and then also, you know, be very specific about the roles of the zoning official, code officer, that type of thing, as to who is designated as such in our, within our organization. So, you know, we bring it back, and with, it'll be another ordinance, but it'll, it'll kind of clean up what I think is kind of outstanding. But, you know, generally, this will be taking the 2015 Property Maintenance Code and updating with 2021, and then we'll come back and make another change here within the next month and a half to pull out the items that are probably not pertinent for Gibraltar. And then I think going forward, when you adopt these, make that part of the condition, you know, we'll look through the language to make sure that this is, you know, appropriate for our community, and that way, you know, it doesn't get delayed like it has here, so. But I think, but still, it makes sense to go forward with it, with the cleanup, with the understanding, we'll clean it up a little bit.
So would it be a conditional motion that's requested based on the cleanup and administrative components, or is this a straight motion for the second reading, for which the understanding is that that would be happening before enforcement or administration?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Counsel motion's in your court if you so chose. I know we've had a lot of discussions of this. I know council members, as well as members of the public, have provided feedback on it, so. Vince has shared his perspective. This is not an area specifically in my wheelhouse or expertise, so I've done my best to understand and lean on the experts for that process. Motion being counsel's court if you so chose.
I'm sorry, okay, we're making a motion?
It'd be a motion requested for us, motion for the second reading by title only.
Yes, I make a motion for the second reading title only.
So there's a motion by Wood for the second reading. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Second by Valentine, counsel discussion?
Yeah, a couple things. It looks like somebody's taken the time to make some revisions to this. Does that impact procedurally our first reading from our second reading in that this reading is modified from its first reading?
Is this different than the first reading?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would, I would think, because several of these items are now revised, such as, they're beautiful revisions that are in accordance with the notes that we put out there that I, that I certainly found in my reading of it. They talked about changing penalties from strict liability to civil infractions. There's also fees that we set as city council and not, not by anybody else. So yeah, there's, there's several updates, I presume, from the first reading, but I, I.
Katie, I think Katie's taking a look as we speak.
No, I, I took the four, the first reading, and I copied and pasted into this packet. We add, we put in the number. Before, it didn't have a number.
Oh, okay.
But that, that, that was it.
When was the first read, when did we do the first reading?
January 22nd.
That, well.
That's why.
That's why.
Okay. Yeah, there's some, some reasonable updates here. There's two outstanding questions that I have, I'd like to get answered, and if, if Vince, if you feel confident that we can bring this up for a potential revision to this in short order to address these items, then it certainly brings comfort beyond what I've had before.
I was pleasantly, if I may, pleasantly surprised to see a lot of the things. I was pleasantly, if I may, pleasantly surprised to see a lot of the things that I think you brought up. I go, oh, there's, okay, there's something in here that, you know, but we could take a closer look at a couple of the items in there as well, so.
Okay. Who would have made these revisions to this? Would that have been our?
It would have been, I would assume Sam or his team, correct?
The attorney, more than likely. I will tell you, just as a matter of process, it's not uncommon that if they have kind of language here, you know, like going away from the strict liability to civil infraction, your city attorney's going to catch that and make those kind of changes, and they probably have almost, I'm not going to say a boilerplate, but there is a form that they use when they get one of these, you know, international codes that they look at to make sure it fits for the, you know, Michigan Constitution statute as well as the city charter. So that's usually typically where it happens, and so, but I think there's a couple other items in there that you brought that need to probably be revised as well, so.
Yeah, if you're confident that we can bring it back up.
I don't have any, yeah.
Like you mentioned, defining who the code official is.
Right.
A couple other things, we're defining who the Board of Appeals is.
Yes.
You know, what constitutes that board, and then also, from a practical standpoint, whether or not for the fire alarm, CO2 alarms, if that, if, what triggers the need to tie them all together hardwired as opposed to battery operated?
Great, so we have any further discussion on the topic? We have a motion.
As long as we can make the adjustments for the people.
Yeah, I'm hearing from Vince's recommendation that that would be a great next step to dive into set adjustments in the administration component of this.
After.
And who would handle that? Would that be you, Vince?
Yeah, but I probably would sit down with maybe a couple of folks on the council here just to go through it and certainly have it reviewed with McKenna a little bit just for clarification, so that, and it kind of ties in with the meeting that we had a couple weeks ago with McKenna. There's some things, I know the chief was there as well. We really fine-tune responsibilities as part of their service and how it fits in with the organization, so that's probably the framework is. But I'll take a quick look at it, I'll be honest with you. I'll take a lead on it, so that when we come in, we can have a quick discussion on that, so.
And I think, just to add to Vince's commentary, just to make sure we're all on the same page here, we got some resident situations that were brought to our attention, experiences with the building department, so we met with those residents, which helped us expose some of the areas or opportunities for improvement. So I think that'll help, to Vince's point, inform how we kind of think about the administration and the oversight piece, and I think Sam from McKenna's been great on that. We also, just for anybody from the public, we'll have a new building inspector that's now going to be present in the city Gibraltar office. So I just appreciate Sam for being a leader of McKenna and listening to the feedback that's been shared by our residents and community and their experiences, and so next, this coming Wednesday, for any council members that are around, you can come meet our new building inspector that will be representing us in City Hall. So Sam, if you're listening, thanks for the partnership and listening to Acts, and I appreciate that a lot. All right, we got a motion, we got a second. Let's call roll.
Wood?
Yes.
Axe?
Yes.
Cosmo?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so ordinance number 421, and ordinance repealing and re-adopting Article 6, property maintenance of Chapter 6, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances, City of Gibraltar, Michigan. And now that we have had our two readings, we'd be looking for a motion to adopt and publish ordinance number 421.
Looking for a motion to adopt and publish ordinance 421 from council?
Motion to adopt and publish ordinance 422?
421.
421.
Okay, motion by Wood, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Valentine, any discussion? Katie, can you call roll?
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmo?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
All right, council, the next item you're seeing in front of you is item B, second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number 422, which is M1, M2, M3 zoning districts. Also in front of you is a set of paper, which are adhered together, which highlights the details here. I'm just going to be really blunt in stating that I'm very grateful for Vince. I'd asked him to look into this specific zoning ordinance language, and the ask was to compare, you recall, there's been a lot of discussions over the course of time here on M1, M2, and M3. And specifically with M1 and M2 consolidation, what does that mean? And what specifically is allowed? And I think we've made it very clear as an administration, as well as our commission, Planning Commission DDA, that there's not an appetite for heavy industrial in the city Gibraltar, that we don't have an appetite for RV park in the city Gibraltar in the larger scale, we don't have an appetite for cargo terminals or freight terminals. I think we made that pretty clear, and if we haven't, I want to make that clear. And so I am really disappointed to let you know that upon this audit, from our city planner who drafted said document, council was given a packet that basically in our M1, M2 consolidated states blast furnaces, steel furnaces, or blooming or rolling mills, cargo and freight terminals, and railroad freight terminals and transfer facilities. I'm incredibly disappointed by this that was given to us, which I have not once, as I've been in this seat nor watching everything and tuning into Planning Commission, have I ever heard us give guidance of that nature. So I'm asking to forego the reading this evening, number one, so that we can modify this document to be appropriate based on the guidance that we've given. So that's one. I don't want any motion from council on any reading of this. This needs to be adjusted. And number two, I'd ask for a motion to RFP for city planner services. I think it's time to revisit our services in that lane, and I would ask for your support in putting out an RFP to assess city planner options for the city Gibraltar. I'm just going to be blunt, stating that I've had some challenges in the partnership. I think we've done a phenomenal job as administration of being very clear, being very thorough, being very data-informed, putting the right people in the right seats, and I just think this one needs a critical look according to experience and what I'm just highlighting for you. So no reading this evening unless anybody feels otherwise, and I'd like a motion to make a priority for RFPing our city planner services.
I make a motion for priority for an RFP.
Okay, motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Molnar, any discussion? Only discussion is Vince, I think we've leaned on you for some of these RFP generations, so if you could support us in that process, we'd greatly appreciate that.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? I think it's a good news of being thorough, so grateful for that. Vince, thanks for catching this during your audit.
Thanks for asking the question.
This would have been absolutely detrimental for our city, and I'm grateful we didn't take any action, and we rely on our experts and services to be experts in services, and I think that was a contrary action. So disappointed, and I'm looking forward to RFPing that city planner services.
One more highlight of why we need qualified people in here reading these things before we just blindly adopt them.
Precisely. Well said. I think we're on the right path. Katie, can you please call roll?
Cosmo?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Great. Vince, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. My first item I have is the RFP for solid waste services. We talked about it at the last meeting. Council asked to have it presented before it goes out for solicitation, and so, you know, I gave a little background associated with the city of Gibraltar, as well as recognizing that, you know, the industry is in a transition. Requesting a five-year contract, which I think is appropriate for a solid waste firm to provide adequate time to amortize the investment that they have to make in a community, whether it's equipment, training, or personnel. You'll see when I get to the solid waste, if they're going to mechanical systems, they're going to have to invest in additional carts on the wheels, so. Listed, we got a little over 1,400, almost 1,500 residential units that gets curbside service. Put together a selection team and schedule. I mentioned certainly included the mayor, Bill Kane, myself as a member, and if any council members are interested, certainly entertain them to review the proposals as well, so. That the schedule would be heading out this Wednesday, having a pre-proposal meeting here in City Hall, so that any interested vendors would be able to come in with the questions, have a discussion. It does give them some flexibility on a couple of items, which I'll discuss in a little bit, and then have a final day for questions and/or issuing any addenda. The proposals would be due on the 24th of May. A time period for review, if the committee's so inclined to do any interviews, you've got that period, but ultimately, would like to get this in front of the city council for your regular meeting on June 24th, no later than that, preferably even June 10th if possible, if all things run smooth with it. I did specify five areas under the general scope of services, weekly residential curbside collection. I did reference Horse Island. I know that a number of us, or most of us, were actually at a meeting last week related to looking at the feasibility of, you know, restoring or renovating the bridge, and so we'll have more coming on that, but I did specify there is, right now, a posted limit on it. Recycling services, I maintained the current format of having a 30-gallon container out there to be picked up twice, but I did give the vendors an alternate bid. If you're going to do it, then consider, you know, providing a 64-gallon cart that would be picked up bi-weekly. Whether they go that route or not is something that they can make that alternate in there to be considered by the committee. Certainly would add to the cost, but, you know, what's the marginal cost and the value of it? Yard waste, really not much as far as the service, other than I put a lot more language in there defining what exactly is yard waste, and I've used it from a proposal request that I've done in the past. Bulk collection is going to be a bit, particularly if you go to the mechanical systems, you know, whether they can run the gamut that, you know, they can pick it up by, just as they're doing the service, getting out of the vehicle, even if with the mechanical arms, sometimes they'll run another truck behind it. Sometimes they may do a special day collection, and some of them may not want to do it at all, other than the resident call and have to pay for whatever it is. So you see the gamut with other local units of government. There's some flexibility in there, but again, I think that value from our end of it of having a committee review that is to understand, you know, what is the right fit for Gibraltar in that capacity. And then we have some other solid waste services, such as the Fourth of July event, Christmas tree pickup, and then we have regular pickup here with some dumpsters here at city facilities, and that we may request other additional roll-off units related to any storm damage or special events that may require. If you flip over, special provisions, this is functionally where the contract language, I didn't go into all the details, kind of running out of time, but talks about the term of contract, customer communication, contractor representative, who's the field representative, who will be the city contacts that we will have, service standards related to hours of service, days of service, conditions of vehicles, determination of units of being served, how we handle additions, deletions, liquidated damages for failing to perform properly. You can talk with them about spilled service, and after a while, you start issuing liquidated damages related to that for failure to follow through on their obligation. Insurance and performance bond requirements, you know, workers' comp's going to follow, you know, the state requirements, but also commercial general liability, naming the city as an additional insured, cancellation of any notice of their insurance changes, and certainly going along with that is indemnification and whole larva provisions, dispute resolution provision, and default and terminations in the event that we get there. So I would view that as something that I would have the city attorney draft. I mean, I've got a form, but again, they may want to have their own specific language on certain elements, because ultimately, if we find ourselves in this predicament, they got to have it in a form that they like. The one thing that, you know, talking with councilmember Molnar is the dispute resolution for us to explicitly state, we are going to have a third-party mediator for any dispute resolution, and we will name that mediator. So I think that's a good provision in there, so that it doesn't get into this battle of both parties, or exclude, you know, you pick, here's a five of them, and each get to throw out two. Well, we'll tell you who it's going to be, so that there isn't any provision. It's a really good, you know, good call on councilmember Molnar's part to have that. It clarifies what can sometimes just be a timely and contentious phase of any dispute resolution. And then the submittal date, the details with it, certainly it'll come to the clerk, and, you know, the method of valuation is, you know, certainly we want somebody capable of providing the service, preference for curbside collection using mechanical systems. I think it does lead to a cleaner community, whether curbside recycling alternative is considered, bulk collection, and then obviously, cost is always in it. And then the language that the city reserves the right to reject any and all bids, waive any or all irregularities and formalities, basically gives us, you know, we aren't obligated to bid, but it's an important clause to have in there, and particularly in this one, because it is a bit flexible where the contractors can, you know, propose service in a couple areas a little differently. So with that, just asking council to go and solicit the contract with priorities scheduled to end at the end of August, so we got a short window to get a contractor, get somebody ready to go, so.
Vince, amazing work, appreciate it, and thanks, council, Molnar, and others that contributed to this, appreciate it a lot.
Vince, do you need to identify two council members for your selection team?
If you, I mean, I throw that out there, but I think it's helpful, given that if there's two council members that would be interested in sitting in on this.
Who's got passion and expertise for joining the contract process here?
I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Councilman Cox. Councilman McNabb?
Yeah.
I like it.
Vince, I have one question on this.
Yeah.
Knowing that we're extending this to a five-year contract, and three years are covered by Riverview as you see outlined, we're leaving that open-ended for where they're taking that refuse based on their price?
I think that's one of the things I would expect from them, and that's why I kind of left it the way it is. Okay, what happens if Riverview no longer is accepting our waste? How do you propose to handle that marginal cost to transport it to another landfill facility? I think we're still going to be obligated for whatever the tipping cost will be, but there may be some marginal cost associated with their transport of refuse.
I think that's a strong evaluating point for us, to see what those transition points prices are from the nearby landfill to what we are going to be forecast to see in the future.
I like it. The beauty of having you involved on this.
Yeah, I make sure, too, that their trucks are updated. We've had so much trouble with them dumping oil on our roads.
That's part of the standard.
They were working on one today.
Another one today?
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some opportunities here, for sure.
Yeah.
I'm glad we're going through the process. All right, Vince needs, so we have two council members identified to join. Vince, what, do you want to talk council through the specific motion you're requesting? I know it's in the packet.
Just requesting council to authorize the city administration to solicit a proposal for residential solid waste services.
Make a motion to put out the RFP for solid waste services.
Second.
As outlined.
Second by Cosmo, and much by Cox. Any other discussion?
Just going forward, as we bring on the new city attorney, we may want to consider, you know, having a draft contract that is referenced with the proposal, so that they can quantify any bullet points.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I got a form that I've used, and so if I hand it off and they want to tweak it, that's perfectly fine, so.
Yeah.
I just ran out of time. I wasn't.
Right, well, we can always do it by addendum to the, you know, put an addendum out that shows our standard contract terms that we demand, just so, you know, in the event that there are terms that are quantifiable, they have the opportunity to bid those at the forefront.
I like it.
I can, happy to work with Anthony on that, too.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. Any other discussion? Katie, can you call roll, please?
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmo?
Yes.
Motion carried, back to you, Vince.
Thank you, Mayor. We're requesting council to consider adoption of a resolution amending the notice of intent for the 2023 downtown development bonds. And come here. We're requesting council to consider adoption of a resolution amending the notice of intent for the 2023 downtown development bonds. This resolution was presented at the DDA meeting last week, identifying nine potential projects that the surplus bond proceeds, the council member Cox referenced in, in his, his report earlier. We have probably about $750,000. And when the initial bond went, it specified that the project, the eligible project cost would be the water main replacement on Middle Gibraltar Road, as well as South Gibraltar Road. That was the scope of the project. It didn't list anything else. So the DDA and city issued 3.455 million dollars in bonds. The project came in substantially less. I think they're just, at this point, wrapping it up. I'm not even sure if there's any more draws to come from it. If there is, it's probably just retainage. But by and large, we're estimating about $750,000. So in order to use those proceeds, you have to identify the projects. And because this is, in Michigan, a capital improvements budget, it's necessary to go back out for a 45-day notice for referendum if someone is going to contest the uses of it. So what I'm listing, what we're listing as the projects are community center HVAC replacement, community center parking lot, city hall parking lot, entryway and wayfinding signs, city hall and community center roof repairs, DPW facility backup power, DPW off-site storage, pedestrian and bicycle trail improvements, and Gibraltar Road bridge replacement over the Frank and, should be Frank and Poet drain. That would prob, the last one, and the last two, would more than likely, if funding is still available, be a local match toward a grant project that we would get for those. So these items are contained in the DDA development plan and tax increment plan. So it fits with that eligibility in that regard. So I know it's a long-winded way to say, in order to do this, we've got to adopt a resolution with these projects and it put out for notice for referendum.
Hey, Vince is looking for said motion.
Like to make a motion to adopt the, adopt the resolution amending the notice of intent for the 2023 downtown development authority bonds.
Councilman Cox, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Any discussion on this one?
No, it looks like the project's up there in the future. I'd like to see this, the community center, be able to get a backup generator, too, because if we ever need to use that for a warming center or heating center, it'd be nice to have a backup generator there. So maybe just future reference-
Okay.
-if we do another project like that.
That's a good call out. Thank you. I'll make sure that's captured.
So this, this money that, that we used for this was a, a bond, and it was a renewal of the bond from this building here.
Right. I shouldn't say renewal, but it was, the one was paid off, and then a new bond was issued for these projects.
Somebody had brought it to my attention, I'm, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on who, but somebody brought it to my attention recently, and they thought that this building was not yet paid off.
It is not. The financing of this building had two, two components. One was the DDA component that was paid off when the, that bond was matured, what, I think last year with the last payment. But there is also a voted millage that you still have on there for the payment on, on this, and it runs for another 10 years. So it's, I want to say about one mil. And so that still has another 10 years on the remainder of that financing aspect of this building.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, that, now, that, that bond would have had to, the, the bond for this building originally would have been, had to have been approved by the voters.
It was.
It was approved by the voters.
Yep.
And so I, the fact that we renewed this bond by only a vote of a DDA, and not to go back out to the voters, is, is, it's, it's a little late to, to argue it, but it's kind of, kind of problematic for me.
And if I may, that's the, that's the purpose, the purpose of the 45-day notice, is for someone, if they're so inclined to push that to a referendum, they get enough petitions, and then it will-
Understood.
-lose their, I actually had a project years and years ago, where, you know, they did pull it, push it to a referendum. It passed pretty convincingly, but, but there was enough petitions to do that. So, but, you know, I was surprised to see, once you've gone out there, that you've got to do it again. And then I, you know, I was talking with the bond attorney, and I said, well, I guess it does make sense. You could oversize your bond issue, knowing full well that if you just specify it's for one purpose, and you're going to have a surplus, then you could sneak in another. So this is actually a good process, I think.
Yeah.
So, but there is the opportunity for someone to contest it, and if they're so inclined to do that.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Good discussion. Any other discussion from council? All right, Katie, please call roll.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Vince, back to you.
Next item is requesting council to approve disaster, state disaster contingency grant funding resolution. In it, the city's applying for over $40,000 in, in reimbursement for eligible expenses. I think, you know, at the start, this was related to the tornado back in late August of last year. So the 24th through, in the 25th, you know, you know, good effort on the part of the fire department, DPW, police, and from an administrative standpoint, Chief Tangay and, and Finance Director Amy, for, for putting this together. They put a lot of time and effort to, to recover this $40,000. And so we need a resolution to, that'll accompany the, the rest of the material that's been submitted, so.
Yeah, I appreciate them for putting together and for all that helped weather that.
Chief, did I mislead you?
No, thank you.
All right, Vince is looking for a motion to adopt the resolution later to section 19 disaster contingency fund grant.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Cosmore. Is there a second?
Second.
Ladies first. Second by Wood. Any discussion? Katie, please call roll. Sorry, I should ask if you got the motion.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Motion carried. Vince, back to you.
We're asking for only one approval tonight. I, I sent it with two, there've been two background checks for part-time seasonal employees, but tonight, we're asking council to authorize the hiring of Kayden Eschman. And then later on, we'll consider another appointment here in the next month. All of the hires do go through a background investigation from the police department, and both of them came back clean. So, but we're just asking for Kayden Eschman to be appointed as a part-time employee.
I'll make a motion that Kayden Eschman be hired as a part-time employee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Any discussion?
He was one of our firemen today.
That's amazing. I'm glad that we're resourcing up on those part-time positions that were open, so.
Yeah, me, too.
What does seasonal mean? Does that mean cutting the grass and stuff?
Predominantly, that's where they're going to do most of their work, but there is a time limitation and hour limitation associated with it. The part-time, I think, works four hours, four days a week. And the seasonal can work, it fits within the framework of the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters. So you can hire seasonal employees for so long and work them pretty much a full schedule during the summer.
Any further discussion?
He's one of our, he's one of our hometown boys, so.
Well, appreciate you very much, Kayden, in pending the vote here. Preliminary, congratulations. Katie, can you please call roll?
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Well, welcome to the family, Kayden. Thank you. Anything else from you, Vince?
That's enough.
All right. Well, thank, thank you for the thorough reports and the actions from council. Clerk Tomasic, what do you got for us?
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk Tomasic? Treasure ARP, we discussed earlier. Again, just want to emphasize how grateful we are for all the service of Treasure ARP, and we got a good plan to fill the, fill the seat, not necessarily maybe the shoes, but hopefully we'll get the right person in that role. So I'm really excited about that process. And with that, Finance Director McEwen is also at her conference, so we're excited for her. Hopefully, she's having a blast. I'm sure she might be tuning in. And that moves us to Police Chief Tangway.
Thank you. Mayor and council in front of you tonight is the Police Department report from April 3rd through April 17th. 162 calls for service, 27 written reports, four of those are crash reports, 10 citations, one arrest, four school resource investigations, and one Detective Bureau follow-up investigation. Some news for the Police Department, Sergeant Trush completed the Week 3 as Staff in Command, so he's moving right along, working on some grant research and paperwork for that school, and that will be a grant helping the school district, we hope. We have some exciting news. After many years of banging on his door, we were able to secure Paul Learback as a part-time dispatcher, a well-respected member of the community, and also a dispatcher who's well-respected along the Downriver area. And he's actually working today in there, so if anybody wants to stop in and say hi. The Chief Charter's Fishing Tournament was held on 4/20, and it was a great event. I was happy to be there, and I was able to get there and help him unload in the morning. And then I had an event I had to attend, and I got back for the afternoon, the evening, just missed the mayor, but we exchanged messages and photos, so that was great. Also included in my report is the Police Department overtime report. Do not have the court's fines and costs yet. They're getting a little slow on that, but we do have a meeting on Thursday with the court, so hopefully they're going to give us some updates on their process. And that's all I have for the Police Department report.
Thank you so much, Chief, for the work in your department. Any questions for Chief Tangway? Great. I know you've already told to hold down the floor for Chief Kane, so we'll give you the floor again.
Absolutely. I think it's great that he can draw up to dinner with them. So including in his packet is the Fire Department report from April 4th to April 18th. 18 total calls, 16 were rescues, two were fire, one was a death fire and a CO detector, zero auto aids, two mutual aids. Some of you have probably heard through the several months, we've been doing a little bit of deep dive into the Fire Department policies, procedures, and budgetary items, along with Amy, and we've made some adjustments recently to the budget. They're going to be limited to 27 shifts per week, which is to bring us in line with some rules of part-time employees. And Chief Kane and I are also working on some other things that hopefully we can present here in the future. One of them got delayed today, so we'll have that hopefully at the next council meeting. The, it says here, we're looking to host another EMT class this year, working on funding, so that's something they're working on. They received a check from Wayne County Firefighters Training Council for payment of the engineer class. That check was turned over to Amy for $16,000, and that covered the latest fire academy class we saw here graduate today. Him and Cindy, Chief Kane and Cindy met with Amy for next year's budget, and they are aligned. And then he listed here one action item. His action item is for two sets of turnout gear. He's requesting for $7,092.92 from McQueen equipment. I see he's only got two quotes in here, one from McQueen, one from Galls. The Galls is significantly lower, but I, I know that dealing with McQueen, at least the, the sizing and the locality is a lot better, and I'm sure the quality is better, too. So it appears it is budgeted and funded, and I would recommend that we honor that request, unless council has other thoughts.
I'd like, you know, I have a little issue with this. This, both of these from McQueen expired in 2023, and the one from Lion Express, which is Galls, looks like it's from a website.
Yes, that's a website.
Well, I, you know, once before, he asked for a turnout, so we told him to give us three bids. He never did come back with us, to the, to us with that. I'm just a little concerned about this as well.
Okay.
So the option would be, if any, if any council member wants to raise a motion, if not, we can table this item, or let Chief Kane bring it back to a future meeting if he so chooses. It's up to council this evening. Is there a motion from council? Okay, I'm not hearing one. We'll have to bring this back to another meeting.
I'll speak to the chief, and we'll try to secure another bid for the next council meeting. That shouldn't be too difficult.
I appreciate that. And I, just to be specific, it's the date of expiration on some of the bids, as well as the number of bids requested and the source of said bids.
And then I have one last thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Maybe if council could consider, in the future, if we could move Parks and Rec up the agenda. I think it's a long time for a part-time employee to have to sit here if, and wait for all of us to go. So I'm just making a recommendation that we can consider that in the future, and maybe allow her to leave a little earlier. She puts a lot of hours in for the city that are unpaid, and I'm just thinking maybe out loud, we could help her out a little bit.
Incredibly well said, Chief. Great idea. I think your face is saying she wants to be here the whole time with us, but I'll let her address that, because it's a perfect transition to our Parks and Recreation Director, Gores.
Dinner's on me. I'm working on 4th of July. I have parade forms I need, if anybody would like to be in the parade, vendor forms. Those are all in the newsletter, city hall, and at the community center. I'm also looking for Ms. Gibraltar, 2024, 13 to 18 years of age. And senior Olympics. Registration will start the end of May. The event is held in Selkirk. 55 years of age to participate, and there's no cutoff, so you can be any, as old as you want to be. And the event starts on August 12th. And our next recreation meeting is May 7th. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Parks and Recreation Director, Gores? Appreciate it.
Katie's like, yes, we can go home.
We'll work with Katie to figure out where the best spot is for your agenda slot, so that you can-
Thank you.
-have an evening. Good suggestion, Chief. All right, on to finished business, you see item A sewer lining project. Obviously, ongoing dialogue, but Vince, turn it over to you for that one.
Yeah, just quickly, there's one sewer lead that's kind of held things up over on Bayview. Mr. Kane and I talked about that today. He's got a plumber that's going to do some videoing of that lead. And it's really held up the, the contractor from going forward with the project, because we wanted to do it the right way. And so he had gotten in touch with the plumber, and so hopefully in the next week, we can address that problem and then turn them loose. And, but I think we would like to take that off of old business, because it's going to happen. So I, I didn't know the story behind it before I came on there. It was old business, but I think, once we take that, we'll keep the council updated through, certainly through Mr. Kane's report to council, where we are with wrapping up that sewer lining project, so.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Vince? No new business, no tabled and referred items, and so that brings us- I was out of state in California and then Arizona before I came back home to the city I love.
Welcome home.
Thank you so much for having me.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further public comment this evening? All right, well, with that, we'll close public comments, and I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Katie, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you all so much for being here.
So much better.
I don't like being told I live on the worst street in Gibraltar. East Point Drive is pretty neglected, I want you to drive around and see it.
Well, I appreciate that, and a part of the, Vince will take a look at it.
I don't know when it's ever been surveyed to know where the street's supposed to be or anything, but you know how Gibraltar is.
Thank you so much for saying that.
I would appreciate your help, thank you.
We've got some road work to do, but I appreciate that, Vince is going to look into it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Oh, he said I didn't get it first place.